Good afternoon, welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of June 12th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call our first item of business?
First up, we just have a couple announcements. June 19th, next Monday, City Council will not meet due to the Juneteenth holiday. And then July 3rd, there will also be no meeting for Independence Day. Starting with our consent agenda, those items are one and two.
Is there anyone here to speak on items one or two on today's agenda? Anything under items one? Or items two? All right, seeing none, let's continue on.
Okay, we can vote on these items. Item 1A is approving the professional services agreement supplemental number two for environmental services between the City of Lincoln and Olson for Adams Street from 36th to 49th Streets, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Items 2A through 2C are setting the hearing dates for upcoming liquor items, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden, discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk?
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden? Schob?
Yes.
Washington? Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next up is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Anybody that's coming forward, please just raise your hand and I'll administer the oath first. I'll be calling items 4A and 4B together. It's application of Sharp Elbows on Tables LLC, doing business as Big Ten Sports Bar and Grill for a Class I liquor license located at 8500 Andromed Drive, and the related manager application of Lance M. Medved.
Is there anyone here to speak on items 4A or 4B? Please come on down. If you could just state your name and address for the record into the microphone over right there, that'd be great.
Sure. Jeremiah Lee Medved. My home address is 6430 Monarch Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska 68516.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about your application, it looks like, for Big Ten Sports Bar?
Yes, so we are franchising an existing business out of Columbus, Nebraska called Big Ten Sports Bar and Grill. We're kind of identifying as the LNK version of that to bring a collegiate sports bar, family-friendly theme to the southeast corner of Lincoln, Nebraska on 84th and Nebraska Parkway. It's not a very large space, but it's going to be a really cool space with an upscale bar food, obviously some spirits, beer and wine, and just really providing Southern Lincoln with some more choices for dining out with their friends and family.
Right, very good. Council members, any questions for the applicant?
Where's this located at again?
84th and Nebraska Parkway, so we're taking over the existing Backyards Burgers Building. It's been closed down, I believe, since 2021. I don't know exactly the month, but great space, great parking, high traffic, very visible from the street, and we're really putting a lot of money into the building. It's going to be pretty impressive when it's done.
Very good, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Mr. Medved, thanks for coming down. When do you open?
We would like to op-- well, I'll tail on all the contractors and GCs. Mid-July, but we would like to be open the first week of August for friends and family and industry people, and then hopefully Tuesday, the 8th of August is our official opening date to the public. Figures crossed. So far, so good. With your help, we can get there.
Best of luck.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4A or 4B? All right, seeing none, madam clerk, let's move on to 4C.
I'll be calling 4C and 4D together. It's the application of Grandmothers Incorporated, doing business as Don and Millies for a Class I liquor license located at 5200 South 56th Street, and the related manager application of Dean F. Rasmussen. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Dean, if you could please start with your name and address for the--
Dean Rasmussen, Grandmothers Inc., doing business as Don and Millies, 5200 South 56th Street. This is the other one that I was here for last Monday, so--
We're sorry--
Deja vu.
Yeah, yeah.
We're sorry to bring you back again.
Okay.
Questions for the applicant at all? All right. Very good, thank you, Dean, for coming down, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4C or 4D? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 4E.
Item 4E is the manager application of Thomas C. Laird for Imperial Brewing Company, doing business as Lazlo Incorporated, located at 729 Q Street.
Hello?
Hello.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thomas Laird, 7927 South 151st Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68138.
Very good, and it sounds like you're taking over the manager application.
I am, from Angie Tucci.
Wow, very good, very good. Counselors, any questions for the applicant?
I do have one question.
Oh, yes.
Were you able to complete your training last week?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much for coming down, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else who are here who would like to speak on item 4E? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to 4F.
Item 4F is the manager application of Tanner G. Lawrenson for GB License Nebraska LLC, doing business as GoPuff, located at 301 Oak Creek Drive.
Good afternoon.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Turning to Nicole Bogan, here on behalf of GoPuff, my business address is 121 South 13th Street, and I have Tanner Lawrenson here with me. We're doing a change in manager application. He did complete his training last week on the 8th, and I have a certificate and email form for that. Any questions?
I'm willing to bet you that answers the one question that we had. Any other questions at all?
Yes, any other questions?
All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 4F? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 4G.
Item 4G is application of Hub Cafe LLC, doing business as Hub Cafe, for special designated licenses to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 30 feet by 30 feet, and an outdoor area measuring approximately 200 feet by 170 feet at Jane Snyder Trail Center at 250 North 21st Street on June 30th, July 28th, August 25th, and September 29th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
You're actually good. Go ahead and start with your name and address, please.
Okay, Carla McCullough, business address, representing Hub Cafe, business address, 250 North 21st Street, Suite 3, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Would you tell us a little bit about your application, please?
Yes, basically, I'm just offering myself up for questions, first of all, but also just introducing the event for people who have not been to it, so this is the fifth year for Hub and Soul. Started in 2019, of course, then 2020, and we've made it all those years through all of the, yeah, and so, anyway, so fifth year and going strong, and we did change the format this year, it's no longer six Thursdays in a row in the fall, it's the final Fridays of June, July, August, and September, so we're ready for primetime on Fridays. And any other questions at all?
Any more questions for the applicant?
What's the event?
It's called Hub and Soul, it's a concert series. It features local musicians, the music runs from basically 5 to 8, and so we open it up from Hub Cafe, plus the Jane Snyder Trail Center, Union Plaza, and the amphitheater adjoining it.
Bring your own lawn chair, right?
People do, and that's a good idea, unless you want grass or it's a stand.
Any other questions for the applicant? Nope, very good, thank you so much for coming down, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 4G?
I would.
Yes, please, come forward. If you could just start with your name and address, please.
My name is Peter Shoup. My personal address is 2133 North 28th. We actually have an adjacent building to what they're doing, it's awesome. The amount of community involvement is crazy. It's been nice to see how much downtown has actually grown, and everybody kind of accepting one as being involved with each other's business.
Very good, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else who would like to speak on item 4G?
4.
I believe so. All right, seeing none, let's move on to 4F. Or H, excuse me.
4H is the application of MSK DJ Incorporated, doing business as Shilling Bridge Cork and Tap House for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 400 feet by 250 feet at 643 Fallbrook Boulevard on July 7th, 2023, from 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM.
Is there anyone here to speak on item 4H? Anyone for 4H? All right, very good, let's move on to 4I.
4I is the application of Zoo Blues Incorporated, doing business as Zoo Bar for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 516 feet by 190 feet at 14th Street between O and P Street on July 6th, from 4 to 11:00 PM, July 7th, from 4 to 1:00 AM, and July 8th, 2023, from 12:00 to 1:00 AM.
Very good, sir.
It's our 50th anniversary, and only real changes from this to this year is we're doing Thursday night as well, but we'll end at 10:30 that night, and Friday and Saturday are about the same, and the site has been extended just a little bit, it's blocking P Street as well. Used to be leaving a lane or two open on P Street.
Okay.
Moving the stage back a little bit, try that.
Okay, so right there into the intersection proper?
Right.
Okay.
Leaves more space for congregating in front of the stage.
Yes, hopefully.
Very good. Any questions for the-- Could you, for the record, please give your name and address?
Yes, Peter Waters, 2735 Everett Street.
Sorry, I forgot about that, my apologies. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Waters, this is exciting, every year. Last year, there was a few comments about some of the neighboring businesses and allowing access to them during the daytime. Have you had conversations with them, and has that been--
I don't know who you'd be talking-- I'm not sure who you're talking about, I try to, I invite those conversations every year before and after the event. I'm not really sure who it'd be, you know, I went around and talked to all the affected businesses--
Say that again, say that again, really, I went around and talked to--
Okay, there's one, Concord Management back there, they're getting a little bit bigger, that parking lots expanded a little bit, but I'm in close communications with those guys.
I think you said you have gone around and talked to all the businesses, is that correct?
I have.
Yeah, that's the part I needed to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, anyone else? Councilwoman.
And I wanted to know if you wanted to give us some hint about who you're bringing in this year?
Give what?
A hint on who you're bringing in this year.
Bringing in this year? We have Charlie Musso-Weitz coming in this year, the Belairs, Igor and the Red Elvises, Amethyst Kaya, I'm really excited about, Shamika Copeland, Carl Denson, who was a saxophone player for the Rolling Stones for 16 years, we have the James Hunter Six from England, who I think's really great, I'm really proud of the lineup this year, I think it's going to be really good.
Have fun.
All right, anyone else? Happy 50th.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here who would like to speak on item 4I? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about these public hearing items, I'd like to move approval of 4A through 4I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson? Any further discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk?
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next up, we have our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for May 16th through May 31st, 2023.
Is there anyone here to speak on item 5A? New impending claims? Anyone here to speak on item 5A? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 5B.
Item 5B is special permit 23019, application of Shady Creek LLC, to allow for an early childhood care facility for up to 75 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 5521 Shady Creek Court.
Is there anyone here to testify on item 45B?
Yes.
Please come on down. If you could just start with your name and address, please.
Brandy Trapp, 5521 Shady Creek Court. Do you need my home address or--
That one's just fine.
Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516.
Please tell us a little bit about your application.
I'm trying to open a childcare center for license for preschool age 3 through 5 with special events for evenings and weekends for school-aged children up to the age of So I'm looking for a special use permit.
All right, very good. Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Duden?
One question, have you checked the registered sex registry yet?
I have not.
You should do so, because you've got somebody living right in that area that needs to be notified, they'll move.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
I had one question, thank you for coming forward. It had to do with the waiver on opaque fencing, and I don't think I have any opinion about it, but I'm just curious why you're asking for a waiver of opaque fencing.
I didn't realize I was, unless my landlord was, possibly US Properties asked?
Very good.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. The existing fenced-in-play area is not a solid fence, it was used with the previous application. Typically, the solid fence is often what we want to see when a daycare backs up to like a row of houses, so you're trying to provide some visual screening. In this case, it's the commercial area, it's toward the street, it's toward, there's apartments around it, and it's the fencing that's been in place for a good 15 years. So we thought, given those circumstances, it was appropriate that it didn't have to be a solid fence that you can't see through.
And it was the fence used by the previous childcare facility?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that you're asking just to use the existing fencing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5B? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 5C.
Item 5C is comprehensive plan conformance 23006, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the University Place Redevelopment Plan to add the North 48th and Madison Avenue Mixed Use Redevelopment Project for the construction of a three-store mixed-use building that will include residential and commercial uses, generally located at the southwest corner of Northwest 48th, excuse me, North 48th and Madison Avenue.
Director Marvin. Thank you. Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. We'll see a few visuals that I can go up with. Wanted to start off with a change in procedure that we're doing, and this is a first example of that. In the past plan amendments, we did not send letters to abutting property owners, this is a change in the way that we've provided additional notification. In this particular case, we would have mailed people within 200 feet of this particular location, so it's first process change that we've had, given the good discussion that we had earlier this, or late last year, or earlier this year, I don't remember when. 48th and Madison is property that was acquired by the City of Lincoln in about 2006, there was a fire, you can kind of see a black and white image of a fire that took place on that corner, Green Plumbing and Heating was in that location. City owned that property for a long time, had very few uses on that property, we would do an annual fireworks stand on that location, a few other events, but basically, it was unused and had been on our website as a surplus property that was available for people to make an application to do something with that property, and that went on for many years with, I think I came here in 2019, we might have had a few indications of interest, but nothing to the point that would bring it to, before this body, to talk about a plan amendment to this particular project. This is the plan amendment, and we did have this discussion the other week, kind of what's the process? There was a blighting of North 48th Street and redevelopment plan, that plan would have been approved in 1998, it's been around for a number of years, there've been a few amendments to this plan over the years, and the area that we're talking about is this area in, mostly in yellow, with some properties over near Wesleyan University. It's primarily a business zone district. The purpose of this plan was to enliven the 48th Street corridor, to create active businesses along that corridor. I think that the vacant lot on 48th and Madison has been an impediment to that development over the years. The base valuation of the property is $435,000. After the investment that Speedway will do in this, on this project, you'll see an increment of $7.4 million, which will generate a present value tax increment financing of just about $2 million over a 20-year period. What do they plan to do? There would be 54 apartments, 54 residential units will be built on that site, there will be about 5,000 square feet for commercial, that commercial will probably be restaurant or a mixed-use development along that corridor. Again, the vision is to try to create a active 48th Street. Challenge on 48th Street is that it's a four-lane road, and there are narrow sidewalks, so you want to be able to create an inviting pedestrian experience, but yet you're going to have cars going through that corridor as well. Skip ahead here, this is the location, again, we talked about this, the hatched area is the area that's eligible for tax increment financing, so the area that surrounds this, Madison Street, I think, is currently torn up, there's some city infrastructure work being done on there, it's either water, wastewater work, 47th Street, and there's an alley that passes through this neighborhood that they would also be able to-- 47th Street, and there's an alley that passes through this neighborhood that they would also be able to create a connection so that to get onto the site, you could come through the alley in the back. And then the vision is to create some active outdoor dining on that alley on the south end of that lot. What will it look like as you go in through 48th Street? You'd be able to see something that you don't see there right now, building, building with active use. And then down at the end would be where it's envisioned that you could have some outdoor dining locations. Parking along this side and residential along much of Madison Street. So again, here's the outdoor dining location. There's a bus stop right about in this location. We've had some conversations with Star Trans about potentially relocating that to a different area. Might be down in here, could be in farther, different. But because the sidewalk is going to be torn up, it will need to be temporarily relocated a short distance, and then a permanent location for that bus stop will be contemplated over time. And here's the outdoor dining. This is public right-of-way, so you'd be able to, pedestrians be able to cross through that neighborhood and get into their residence, or from the residence, be able to walk through and get to the neighborhood restaurant as well. Backside of the building, it's mostly going to be apartments on that. Again, it's not a large number. The goal in this is to, it's 54 apartments, is to make 20% of them affordable, meaning that the rents would be affordable for somebody making 60% of area meeting income. Another view of the back of it. And then this is the Madison Street, so it would allow public parking with a little break in the street to kind of green up that area along that part of the area. I think I'll stop there. Showed enough pictures. Here's a site plan looking down. You'll notice that they do have designated wheelchair or accessible locations on site. And I'll stop there and answer any questions you have. I know that Danae Kalkowski is here, pinching for Kent would probably come up and take a couple of minutes. Your time too.
Very good. Any questions for Director Marvin at this point in time? All right.
Do want to mention one other item. On your agenda, in the ordinance section, is an adjustment to the PUD that's related to this. We've had a number of public meetings about this project and also about the change that that PUD would have. And I know that Steve is here, can speak to the change in the PUD in regards to alcohol on this site as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I believe Councilman Carlson may have a question for you.
Quick question, Dan. Parking, how many stalls is that, and is that adequate for that size of building?
The number of parking stalls, I think, is like 65, between 64 and 68 parking stalls. So they would be one-to-one on the apartments, so they'd be able to provide one-to-one for the 54 apartments, plus additional parking for the people that would be able to go to the restaurant. There's also on-street parking that they will create on Madison. So we've had that reviewed, and we think that it's adequate parking for that area. There's also, unbeknownst to a lot of people in Lincoln, the city does actually own public parking across 48th Street, and so two actual public parking stalls. One near 47th and St. Paul, there's public parking, and then across the street, there's public parking that's managed by our department, the Parking Enterprise Fund manages that as well.
Other questions for Director Marvin? All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, Seacrest and Kalkowski Law Firm, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105, appearing today on behalf of New Generation Property LLC, doing business at Speedway Properties. I just, Dan did a great job kind of explaining the project and what's going on. I was just going to mention a couple of things. There were two neighbor meetings held, and the project was very well received. University Place Organization meeting held in February. There were 20 people in attendance there, and a neighborhood meeting on May 11th with the adjacent neighbors, and there were only two people who showed up there, but all in support, and the alcohol issue was addressed at that time, too. And then I think you'll see in your packet, there was also a letter of support from the President of Wesleyan. So good neighborhood support for the project, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Danae? All right, seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5C? Anyone else here for item 5C? All right, very good. Let's move on to 5D.
Item 5D is approval of Amendment Number Three to the Annexation Agreement for Van Dorn Street Coalition between the City, Matadoll LLC, Roger H. Graff, Darrell Lee Bohack, and Christie A. Bohack, and Christopher A. Kidwell.
Mr. C.
Yes, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street. What you have in front of you is Amendment Number Three to a conditional annexation zoning agreement that was entered into by the city and the developers at this site, beginning in 2017. The site is generally located northwest of the intersection of South 98th Street and Van Dorn. As we move toward paving of South 98th Street, and as the Wandering Creek Development continues to move eastward, there are two access points that will be taken to South 98th Street. As part of that paving project, they will construct turn lanes to be funded by the developer at that location. And this agreement memorializes the condition that when those right turn lanes, well, right and left turn lanes are constructed, they will be considered eligible for impact fee reimbursement. So that's really what you have in front of you. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. C? Councilman Choob? Nope. Mr. C., I believe we also have a motion to amend as well. Could you speak oh-so briefly about that?
Yes, there's a quick motion to amend to fill in a couple of blanks on page four that talk about the timing of construction of South 98th Street, and then as well as to make explicit that one of the property owners is not financially responsible for those turn lanes. That's been understood, but this makes it clear in the agreement.
Right, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5D?
Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105, appearing today on behalf of Matadoll LLC. We were here last week with the amendment to the PUD that allowed the one connection over to 98th and mentioned we'd be back with the annexation agreement amendment today. So we do have a separate agreement with the county that allows Matadoll to pay for the right, county will build them, but Matadoll will pay for those right and left turn lanes at those two intersections, and then seek reimbursement through their directed impact fees. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Danae?
Do impact fees usually reimburse the developers?
If it's for arterial street impact fee facility improvements, yes, they can be. So the developers typically needing the improvement ahead of the city having the funding, so they front the funding, and then as they develop their project and the impact fees come in, those impact fees can be used to reimburse those costs that would otherwise be a public cost.
Do they do that all the time?
Yeah, it's pretty standard practice with our annexation agreements.
Okay.
Our problem is most times, depending on what improvements you're building, the impact fees don't necessarily pay for 100% of the improvements. But when we're doing things like just turn lanes and intersection improvements, a lot of times, they'll be able to cover the costs.
I had a question from a constituent about development at 63rd and Old Cheney where they didn't pay for the, the city didn't reimburse anybody.
Okay, not familiar with that one.
I'll have to get some more information.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Danae? All right, seeing none.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5D? Anyone else here to speak on item 5D? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Okay, we can now vote on these items. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for May 16th through May 31st, 2023, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Choob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 5B is special permit 23019, application of Shady Creek LLC to allow for an early childhood care facility for up to 75 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 5521 Shady Creek Court, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Choob, discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Weber.
Yes.
Choob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 5C is comprehensive plan conformance 23006, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the University Place redevelopment plan to add the North 48th and Madison Avenue mixed-use redevelopment project for the construction of a three-story mixed-use building that will include residential and commercial uses, generally located at the southwest corner of North 48th and Madison Avenue, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion.
Good thing. Housing.
Yeah. I will also add, it will be nice to see the redevelopment of the former Green site in this area of town transition into a new catalyst project for the area. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Choob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
My apologies, did I miss someone?
Nope, I was coming.
Okay, very good.
Your comments were better than my comments.
I wanted to make sure I didn't miss Councilman Bowers. So, okay, very good. Let's move on to 5D.
Item 5D, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Annexation Agreement for Van Dorn Street Coalition between the City, Matadoll LLC, Roger H. Graff, Darrell Lee Bohack, and Christie A. Bohack, and Christopher A. Kidwell, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Choob.
I would also like to make a motion to amend Bill Number 23R233, introduced on June 5th, 2023, by adopting substitute attachment A to clarify that Christopher Kidwell, a party to the agreement, is not financially obligated to the city as it relates to the street improvements discussed in this agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion on this motion to amend that we have before us right now? All right, seeing none. Brandy, if you could call, please call the roll on that.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Choob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Back to the main motion of 5D. Are there any comments? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Choob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next up, we have our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item 6A is authorizing Lincoln Electric System to enter into one or more subordinate credit agreements with Union Bank and Trust not to exceed $50 million.
Move pretty fast on those.
I'm a pro. I've been at this awhile. Although hopefully these will not fall down. Good afternoon, I'm Emily Koenig, Vice President and CFO at Lincoln Electric System, here today to speak in support of the 2023 subordinate credit facility that we're seeking, ordinance that we're seeking authorization for. So what this amounts to is that we are seeking authorization for an additional credit facility not to exceed $50 million, and so the ELS Board has directed staff to bring this to you for consideration. So just to give a little bit of background, ELS has not increased its funding authorization or financing authorization capacity since 2014. And so with the potential for growth in our system and the growth that we've seen actually, but you know, the potential for large data center customers, those sorts of things that might require additional generation capacity. We think it's prudent to have additional access to cash and liquidity at this time. I have one quick visual. It's a little bit busy, but I think it might help if I get this going the right way. Explain this just a little bit better and how it falls in kind of the order of things. I'll wait for that to be pulled up. Maybe.
Well, we might need to force it.
He told me he would take care of it.
Here.
Okay.
We'll be able to do it here.
There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, so this is just a quick visual. It's a little bit busy. I used it at the ELS Board meeting, but it kind of describes how this new facility will fit into the other obligations of ELS. And just as a quick reminder, all ELS financing obligations are backed strictly from revenues from the electric system and not the city. But first off, we have operations and maintenance expenses, which are the first things that get paid. This is kind of the who gets paid first. We also have senior bonds. I was here last fall and saw authorization for $300 million authorization that spans through December of 2024. But the lower three items on that chart are really our short-term facilities, and so the purpose of those generally are threefold. So first, we like to have a portion of our debt in a short-term facility so that we can have mitigation against interest rate risk, and so we have about 10% to 15% of our debt in commercial paper at this time, 65.5 million. I forgot to mention that we currently have 562 million outstanding in our long-term bonds. We do have a credit facility, that 2014 credit facility, which authorizes us to work with a bank and have an agreement up to 50 million. We've had that in place for nine years. We've only pulled on it one time. Its purpose really is for emergency needs, and we only drew on it at the beginning of COVID-19, really, you know, all the uncertainty associated with that, along with the uncertainty in the financial markets. We thought it was prudent to draw 35 million on that. We held those monies and we didn't use them, and we repaid them in December. But then with the growth in the system and also our increasing, you know, we are exposed to energy market risk, as is demonstrated in 2021 with winter storm Uri. Some utilities had tens of millions of dollars worth of bills they had to pay just for a week. You know, it's just prudent for us to have additional capacity in order to borrow on a quick basis, and so these last two facilities at the bottom, we really can get access to money in two or three days. And so we want to add another one, up to 50 million. The intent is not to borrow on it at this time. We really just want to have it in place as a prudent measure. And so if the ordinance is approved, we intend to enter into an agreement with Union Bank and Trust for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
How'd you come up with the 50 million?
You know, actually, it stemmed from, we recently renegotiated the 2014 credit facility for 50 million, and during the review of pricing options for that, we had the Union Bank opportunity as well, and so that kind of spurred our interest in maybe expanding the portfolio to 100 million.
Other questions?
Okay, I have one other quick note, if I may. So our intent was actually to bring forward a resolution at this meeting also for our economic development rider to suspend that due to some communications naffews. We didn't get that quite aligned with this one. That's a, I'll be back in a couple of weeks to talk about that, but wanted to give you just a minute on that in case you have any questions in the meantime, because it is related to this. So the economic development rider is available for large, high-load factor customers who are bringing new load to the service area. We implemented this in 2018 when we had excess generating capacity due to forecasted system growth, the potential for new generation capacity to be needed. It's in the best interest of ELS's existing customers for us to suspend that, so we'll be bringing that forward, but it's a complicated one, so just wanted to give you a little teaser there, and if you want to call me if you have any questions, in the meantime, I'd be happy to take those.
Might get some of those questions.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this point on the credit agreement for 50 million that we have before us now? I do have one just, one reiteration.
Yep.
So this credit agreement is an option to extend that credit. It is not actually extending $50 million to ELS.
That's right.
I just want to make sure that people out there are. I just want to make sure that people out there are aware.
Yes, we are not borrowing an additional 50 million, we're just putting a facility in place to allow us to do that if needed.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 6A? Anyone else here for Item 6A? All right, let's move to 6B.
Item 6B is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter M by changing the pay range for Class 2028 Parking Manager from M4 to M5.
Director McIntyre.
Hi, how are you guys? Barb McIntyre, 575 South 10th Street, uh, Human Resources Director. And this is coming forward from Urban Development today, their Assistant Director of Urban Development is doing this work. The class existed, but it was dated, so we've updated the class to reflect the work that at some point will shift from that Assistant Director of Urban Development in, back into the class, and we've updated the pay range to align with market data. But right now it is vacant and no one is in it.
Any questions for Director McIntyre on Item 6B? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 6B? Seeing none, let's move on to 6C.
Item 6C is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned at the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A by changing the pay range from Class 3668 Public Health Accreditation Coordinator to Public Health Performance Management Coordinator from A15 to M4.
Yeah, so what we are doing here is we are actually reflecting additional work that was added into this position. So this position not only is going to have the National Public Health Accreditation work, but it's also ensuring the implementation of our community-wide plans to address the public health priorities that were identified in the Community Health Improvement Plan. So we want to recognize that those duties are being added into this position in the title change and then the change of the salary level. When we looked at what pay to align that with, because we could not, it's really a unique position, we could not find market data for that, so we looked internally at others that had the same scope of responsibilities or breadth of responsibilities and level, and we aligned that to an internal pay scale to try to be equitable between others doing similar work, um, since we could not find any market data on this one. And it is held by one person, it is, uh, currently, uh, filled position.
Okay, very good, any questions for Director McIntyre at this point? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 6C? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 6D.
Item 6D is Change of Zone 23031, application of Wayuka Trustee Chair for the Wayuka Historic Park for a change of zone from R4 Residential District to P Public Use District, from B1 Local Business District to P Public Use District, and from P Public Use Street to B1 Local Business District, generally located at the southeast corner of North 35th and Q Streets.
All right, we're done, floor is yours.
Do I need to do that?
If you could just start with your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Greg Osborne, and I'm here representing the trustees of Wayuka. Uh, I'm currently their Facil- Facilities Director, and I'm here in support of this change of zoning. Uh, you, I'm sure, I know, have, uh, the change of zoning for 23031 for Wayuka Historic Cemetery. These are, in a short version of what she just said, these are three lots that run on Q Street just east of 35th Street, which is now a new paved street that takes you into Gatehouse Row. Those lots, we found out when we were starting to restore our public park, that, um, they were rated R4. And so I made a request, and, uh, George, uh, Westhoff also helped me, and through our discussions, we found out there was a couple of other discrepancies that we thought that we'd clean up at the same time. The purpose of this area, those three lots, will be for a, uh, playground, an all-inclusive children's playground for that area. We started discussions on restoring Wayuka's park, which was established in 1869, uh, to, uh, make it available for the public, uh, and things. And so part of that was going on, there's actually four parts of this restoration of the public park, one is to restore the pond, which is going to start in September. Uh, the second was is to recreate and restore the original park. The third was to, um, establish a all, uh, inclusive children's park. And then we got a big surprise earlier this year that, uh, uh, the Pershing mural will be restored and placed at Wayuka Park, um, for, uh, generations to see. Uh, so, that, that kind of answers all of, of that portion, do you have any questions or anything for me about this?
Any questions, Mr. Osborne?
Anything about Wayuka?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you much.
Councilman Schob, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Osborne, for coming down. You said four things, what's the timeline on these four things? You said the park, the pond will start this fall.
Yeah, the pond, hopefully, uh, we're waiting for a 404 permit, which should be established hopefully within the next week or two, it'll go out for public bed. Uh, then, uh, hopefully September 1st, middle of September, we'll start construction on that. Our playground and park, we've already started, uh, fundraising for that. Um, and, uh, hopefully, 2024, we'll be implementing that. And then the mural people are involved in raising money for the mural, and the, the timeline on that is when the park, or when the pond is finished, because we're using, where the mural is going to be setting as a staging area for the pond, soon as that's completed, uh, and the funds are raised, uh, we'll start on the mural, so we're hopefully, June, July, we'll be able to start on, put the mural, that's huge project, 140 feet long, 50 feet in the air, they're talking about footing somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 120 feet deep, so it'll be a huge project. But it'll be awesome, Wayuka, Wayuka educates thousands of visitors a year, not only just about Wayuka, but about the history of Nebraska because of, there's seven or eight governors buried there, lots of actors and things like that, so the mural is a perfect place for Wayuka because we're already, uh, we have kids that come into the park that we, we, uh, they do, uh, a science training thing there. Uh, so, uh, we're, uh, listed on the Registry of Historic Places, the National Registry of Historic Places, so that exposes our Pershing mural to national, uh, exposure, so it, it'll be a huge plus for Lincoln and Wayuka.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Lot going on.
Yeah, no, I'm very excited about all the things that you're doing and how you're inviting the public into Wayuka, thank you so very much.
You bet, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on Item 6D? All right, seeing none, let's move on to Item 6E.
Item 6E is Change of Zone 08057E, application of Urban Development Director to amend the University Place Plan Unit Development to allow the sale of alcohol for consumption on and off the premises with associated waivers on the property generally located at 2747 North 48th Street.
Is there anyone here to speak on Item 6E, I know we've talked a little bit about it with our pri- previous application? Anyone here who would like to speak on Item 6E? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
That ends our public hearing portion, we can now move on to ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is Special Permit 1304A, application of Clyde Malone Center to allow for the expansion and reconstruction of a non-conforming structure with associated waivers on the property generally located at 2032 U Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Schob, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 7B is Street and Alley Vacation 23001, application of Clyde Malone Center Community Center to vacate a portion of the south side of Vine Street right of way between Antelope Valley Parkway and North 22nd Street, generally located at 2032 U Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Schob, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 7C is Annexation 22009, application of Matadoll LLC to annex approximately .61 acres, more or less, on property generally located at South 98th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Schob, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next is Item 7D, Change of Zone 17030E, application of Matadoll LLC for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential Plan Unit Development to expand the Wandering Creek PUD for 5.92 acres with connection of Rattlesnake Road to South 98th Street with up to 645 multifamily dwellings, a 400, 480-person residential healthcare facility, 47,200 square feet of commercial floor area, and 391 dwellings with associated waivers generally located at South 98th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 7E is approving the real estate purchase agreement between the City of Lincoln and Bridges to Hope for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 27th and Leighton, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion?
I just want, got a comment I want to say, uh, I guess to quote some old council members, uh, this is a good thing. Um, Bridges to Hope has a good reputation, uh, and has been a longstanding, uh, agency in Lincoln. Um, they've earned the trust of the community and have earned the trust of this council, they've been good partners, uh, meeting some of Lincoln's, uh, most difficult needs. Uh, I'm proud that this is going to be moving forward in Lincoln, and I want to commend you on, uh, your vision for this, um, and the fact that you've been able to, uh, continue to overcome the obstacles, uh, that have been put in front of you to make this a reality. Um, thank you so much for bringing this in, I look forward to, uh, doing whatever I can to continue to help make this successful, um, so congratulations.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Duden.
I'm struggling with this one because I've had, uh, comments from people that live up there that haven't felt like they've been fully informed of the scope of the project. And, uh, I've referred, I think, some, one constituent to Jason, uh, Bowers in regards to that same thing, so I'm, I'm struggling with this project.
Very good, anyone else who would like to comment? Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, first, uh, Councilman Bowers, what you said, I couldn't say any better than that, and I just wanted to say that this, um, I think is a really much-needed project, um, transitional living, uh, helping people move from incarceration into, back into society is a hard task, and there, there are a lot of obstacles, and I am sure there are people who have concerns, but I am very proud to support this project going forward, and I'm excited about the opportunity to have another housing style, um, uh, brought to Lincoln, I really look forward to, to seeing how this plays out, and I think it's probably one of the best ways to give people the best chance of reintegrating into community and being successful at it. Thank you.
Other comments from councilors? Okay, thank you, let's call the roll.
Uh, before we do that, is there a motion to amend on this item?
Oh, yes, I apologize, I believe there is a motion to amend.
There is, and I buried it in my papers, pardon me.
Appreciate it.
I would like, uh, Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend number one, uh, on this item 2374. It clarifies and revises provisions related to rent restrictions, um, to be followed by the purchaser going forward.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion on just the motion to amend? Seeing none, let's call the roll on the motion to amend.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one.
And then back to the main motion, let's call the roll on the main motion for 7E.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. Item 7F is approving the 27th and Star Redevelopment Agreement between the City and Marshall Development LLC relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at the southwest corner of 27th and Star Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Comments on this?
I believe there is, um, a motion to amend on this project as well.
Okay.
Uh, this is motion to amend number one, 23R213, um, and it's, um, to achieve consistency with the number of affordable units required by the agreement.
Is there a second on that motion to amend?
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion just on the motion to amend?
Uh, I really appreciate the work we're doing to ensure that there are affordable housing units in all TIF-financed projects, and I appreciate, um, our movement to a higher number of 20% of the units, so it's easy to support for me, thank you.
Very good, any other comments on the motion to amend? All right, seeing none, let's call the roll on the motion to amend.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Back to the main motion, are there any comments councilors would like to make on the main motion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 7G is amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 CIP to authorize and appropriate $446,658 in TIF funds for the 27th and Star Street redevelopment project, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion, comments? All right, seeing none, let's call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item 7H is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 27th and Star Street redevelopment project redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed $446,658 in tax increment financing, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? All right, I will just add, I would like to thank the developer here, Aaron Byrd. He has a history of redeveloping in core neighborhoods and bringing in not only new housing but also affordable new housing units as well. This particular project has a high volume of three-bedroom units, which is a great asset to families who are looking for new affordable housing. Please call the roll.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1. Item 7I is approving the Northwest 48th and Holdridge redevelopment agreement between the city and Northwest 48th Apartments LLC relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at Northwest 48th and Holdridge Streets, introduced by Washington.
So moved. Oops, wait a second. Could someone actually move that instead of me? I'm going to chair this section.
So moved.
Is it?
Yep, that's correct.
Yep. I have to.
You ready?
Thank you. Wait a second, you moved it.
And I'm going to go with the second one. You're ready, Madam Chair. You ready?
Sorry, and I am now ready. Thank you.
Second.
I appreciate everyone's patience while we change the guard. All right, does anyone have any comments on this project? Yes.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to discuss this project generally. It's in my district, and I, I view it as a really thoughtful investment in the Air Park area. I'm planning on, on voting for this project for a few reasons. The first is the affordable housing that this project's going to bring to, to the Air Park community. There's going to be 38 affordable housing units when it's fully constructed, and I feel like that's going to be a significant number in Northwest Lincoln. The solar enhancement component of this project also is something that makes me really excited. I think that that could be a model going forward for other developments, and I, I think that, I, I really appreciate the financial commitment that the developers are putting towards that, as well as, more than anything, just the, the process that the community input had, right? Because of the conversations with the community, they talked about building the, the unit closest to the neighborhood to having a pitched roof instead of a flat roof, which was a concern of the, the neighbors, as well as requesting the opaque fencing along the neighborhood boundary. So I really appreciate the collaborative approach that both the community and the developers took in this project. And I really appreciate that it's happening in Air Park. I can speak from experience that this is one of the fastest-growing parts of the city, and it, it has a lot of potential, but it far too often feels really neglected. And, and I, I appreciate that because I think this is a, a good first step in the right direction. If we continue to invest in this community, like we are with the Air Park Community Center, with Northwest High School, I see this as an opportunity to truly improve the lives of Lincolnites in this community, and that's why I intend, intend to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Madam Clerk? If, you would call the roll?
Duden?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-1. Next up is item 7J, amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 CIP to authorize and appropriate $9,612,000 in TIF funds for the Northwest 48th and Holdridge redevelopment project, introduced by Washington.
Can I have someone else?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes. I think that amount is just so excessive. I think TIF, you know, I don't have any problems with using TIF on projects, but the solar and the rainwater retention barrels, those are all excessive, I think, and end up driving up the cost of that, that project. Just the solar, the enhancement that they'll have to do for the roofing is going to increase the cost of that project, and I'm not sure TIF should be used for something like that.
Anyone else? All right, we can call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-1. Item 7K is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Northwest 48th and Holdridge redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed $9,612,000, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Are there any further comments? I'd like to make one comment. I want to say that this is how it happens. We can have disagreements, and oftentimes we do, but we move forward and we, we treat each other with respect, and I appreciate hearing your comments, Mr. Duden, and having you explain your vote. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Let's call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-1. Next, we have our resolutions. The first reading are items 8A through 8G. Ordinances first reading are items 9A through 9H. And then our pending list is items 10A through 10D.
Transition between chairs?
In transition.
Are we on public comment, Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk?
We are, yeah.
All right, very good. Now is the time for public comment during our hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda nor planned for a future agenda may do so now. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Open microphone sessions will be held June 12th and June 26th, 2023. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward. And if you could just start with your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mamun Qureshian. I'm from 8040 Abigail Drive. About two weeks ago, I came to the council and I talked with you guys about it. I also emailed Mr. Dundon, I believe, yesterday. My bad. Thank you, though, for responding so late also.
No problem.
Um, what I just wanted to mention here today is, um, something the city of Lincoln is really moving forward with is, I, I'd like to say, though, that first off, too, thank you guys for being very interactive with development, especially being very pro-development, not only from my side, but especially people across the state, too, across forums everywhere. A lot of people are praising the city council for being very pro-development and helping out the city progress. But, um, one of the issues I'd like to address about Lincoln is just how far it's, it's expanding outwards. And don't get me wrong, stuff such as suburbs, their concept is great, but the execution we have right now, it just, I feel it needs some improvements to it. So I live, as I mentioned, near Abigail Drive, Chennie Ridge, and the nearest grocery store is about 10 minutes by car and about 30 minutes by foot, and that's kind of an issue for something so basic as groceries. It's really hard to access by foot or by bike. And it'd just be great that when expanding, suburban sprawl is a concept that's around the entire country and around the world. Again, suburbs aren't bad, it just, it needs to be planned out properly so that within that area of the suburb, it's able for everybody to access. Village Gardens is a great concept, but needs some more elaboration on it. Like, it, it's a good centralized location, and I think a lot of people can say that it's a pretty walkable area, and people hang out there, kids, adults, everybody. But it also needs some more necessities to be accessed there, such as grocery stores. And just every side needs to be taken into account because it, not only does it lead to a stronger city, it just creates a better sense of community also, grows economically, a much stronger community with more pride in it. It just needs to start more connections between those two suburbs, and major arterial roads in suburbs and more housing instead of that equal division between both. It's not the greatest idea. So I hope you guys will consider it when new projects are proposed, such as expanding land, like near Satillo example, as an example, near Standing Bear. That's all, though. Thank you.
Very good. Hold on just one moment. Do we have any questions for the testifier? Very good. Are you old enough to work? We might have an opening in the planning department.
I know. I was thinking intern.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify during public comment? Please come forward.
I know part of your, sorry, I'll come up here.
No, it's all good. If you could please start with your name and address.
My name is Peter Shoup. My address is 2133 North 28th. I know you guys have already kind of gone over the fact of item 7E. And I know we're not going to go over a whole lot of it, but I would like to speak my thoughts on this, and I would like you guys to reconsider to a point because I've been trying to contact Mr. Bowers that I've never gotten a return call from.
Is this specifically in relation to 7B?
Yes, it is. 7E.
7E? And I'm sorry, we've already had public hearing on item 7E?
I agree. And I've actually even spoken with Ms. Mattingly. She called me on Sunday. So I've been able to speak with her primarily Sunday, and that's it.
Okay, very good.
We've spent weeks trying to get in contact with everybody so that way we could obviously communicate, because I could not make it last week due to the 3 o'clock timeframe.
Sure.
My employer was graciously enough to obviously let me come to today.
Sure. Unfortunately, we're not, we cannot allow someone to speak on an item that's on the agenda here today. Is that correct, sir? Mr. Christie?
Honesty Christie, City Attorney. Yes, the council rules do not allow for someone to speak on an item that is on the agenda or scheduled to be on a future, uh, future agenda. I, I would note that someone always has the opportunity to also write a, a letter, either via email or written correspondence to the council as well. That would be.
May I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Is it something that can be petitioned by the neighborhood organization?
The, the approval of the real estate purchase agreement? Mr. Christie?
I don't. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I understand the question, but I'm happy to speak with you after this, but when you say petition.
Yeah, they don't want it.
Okay.
The neighborhood does not want it.
I would say without, I mean, generally speaking, there's always an option for citizens to exercise the petition option. So, but I'm happy to speak with you more about it.
Okay. Councilman Duden?
Tom, thank you very much. The, the project hasn't been approved, though. So this is just the sale of the property up there. So there'll be another opportunity for public comment, questions, that sort of thing, on just a project.
My understanding is, is that there, I, I don't know if there's going to be a redevelopment agreement with this particular project. If Director Marvin is here, he may have already left.
Or Steve Hendrickson.
Or Steve Hendrickson. If either one of those gentlemen aren't back, I'm not sure. I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the, the, this particular project to know if they will be coming before.
May I leave my contact info to get correspondence to that portion of it, then?
Yep, absolutely. And, and Mr. Christie here will be more than happy to provide that to you. Yep. Is there anyone here, anyone else here who would like to speak on an item not on today's agenda? Yes, please come forward.
I'll call you tonight.
If you could just please start out with your name and address, please.
Hey, my name is Justine Kiker. I'm at 4243 Cripple Creek Road. I just talked to Fire Chief Dave Engler. My main concern is the fire and rescue. I live around 40th and Pine Lake, and about every hour, every two hours, they have a, a call, mostly to Savannah Pines and the Medical Center, the Pine Lake Medical Center. But the, the air horn, you know, this is 120 decibel air horn. I can hear it at 48th from Fire Station 6, 48th and, you know, where? Old Chaney. Then I can hear it at 48th, 40th and Old Chaney. Then it's at my corner. This, yeah, my, my family thinks I'm petty about this, but it, it's just frequent and it seems unnecessary. It's, and he said it was a state law that if you have lights and sirens that you need the air horn. Now I do have a solution. There are other cities that, these, these are like, a lot of them are slip and falls. There are lift assistance, heart, heart attacks. They're supposed to have lights and sirens for life-threatening, but most of these aren't. And other cities are doing healthcare house calls that the paramedics, that, that if there's frequent calls like this, that they have in-house or they have just medical units, that there don't need to be lights and sirens and air horns.
Very good.
So.
Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman?
I, I do have a question. When you said the, the air horns coming out at 40th and Pine Lake, is that the city's LFR station, or is that the southeast?
These are the rescue vehicles and the fire trucks. Yeah, sometimes, either the fire engines or the ambulances, they have to blow their air horn at the intersections.
Right. Oh, okay, thank you. I just had to get the geography.
Sorry.
So tell me about the healthcare house calls. So that would not be LFR responding?
Yeah, here's an article. I.
I'm sorry, could you say that, are you saying that house, healthcare house calls are the city fire department responding or the facility themselves responding?
The, in other cities, they have their fire department. It's a, it's a program that instead of sending ambulances and fire trucks, I mean, that's an issue, another issue, that there doesn't need to be fire engines sent on most of these calls.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for the testifier? Nina, thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify during public comment period? Anyone else here who would like to testify today? I would entertain a motion.
I would motion adjournment.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Madam Clerk?
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
We are adjourned.